Good.
Today.
I had a nice conversation with Mr. Pepe today. People, brother? Very nice.
I'm the timekeeper.
She works for England some business. Yeah, and I thought we said that could be a conflict eventually. We didn't let it go. And that's exactly what I told him.
I have a good discussion.
That's exactly the reason of my concerns, and he shares the same concern. We're starting off on the right foot then, because...
Why don't you please come to you?
I don't...
This is how I praised it.
Zach and I share.
Probably not a good idea to let the Fox run there.
Zach and I share.
And that's exactly the way I perceive it to be.
Hi, Max. How are you?
And they end rounded it. Yeah, that's not right. I'm gonna need your guidance around this, so I won't be naive to that.
One for close, I guess, back in America. They're four closer than I think.
Jeff's not here yet.
Yes, did you talk through the bird call?
I think that looks familiar.
I guess you bang the gavel and everything, huh? You get to pour it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's right about seven o'clock. Everybody ready? We're missing somebody, aren't we?
We're short. I don't know. I mean, we have a...
Bonnie, I guess we're gonna start off with a call to order and then a roll call?
Call to order and pledge allegiance.
Then the roll call. All right, we're gonna have a quick call to order. We'll do the pledge allegiance. Welcome, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justiciable.
Now, Bonnie, I guess it's time for the roll call.
Mr. Bradfield?
Here.
Mr. Mithers?
Here.
Mrs. Odom?
Here.
Mrs. Sloan?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Sander?
Here.
Chairman West is absent. She's out of town. Mr. Hollerin, our senior alternate, not here. Mrs. Longstreet, junior alternate, not here.
So, does that put us just one shy?
No.
Okay.
There's enough.
There's enough, all right. We need the approval of the minutes for the regular planning and zoning board on meeting in February 16th.
So moved. Second.
Very good. We'll approve minutes. At this time, this opportunity for public comment, I guess based on the last meeting. Do we have anybody prepared to make public comment? Not on YouTube. Would you?
Tom Reynolds, 888-1A Beach Boulevard. Thank you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Els. And did we have one other public comment?
Craig Thompson, number 60 Street, Unit A. This is a general information that I wanted to have the board be aware of. And basically, I was in this building department looking at some of the lot development in Chautauqua and Coquenaux Beach. And on the way back with Joe, we noticed that the stakes were up for the Runk property. And so I did call city. And yesterday, I actually went in and spoke to Gary and received a copy of the permit, clearing permit for that property. As you know, it's a very large piece of property, undeveloped piece of property. Is everybody aware of what the Runk property is?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No, I'm not.
It's a last undeveloped tract of land in St. Augustine Beach.
Why don't you, for the record, give a location for it? If you can, Craig.
Lot 710 west of Chautauqua Beach. So where 6th Street, 8th Street, and everything run in and dead end into a ditch. The property due west of that is the Runk property.
Okay.
Frontsmither Boulevard.
If I'm not mistaken, is that approximately like 30 acres that's been pre-approved for 72 units? Something of that sort?
Correct. I would... You're probably absolutely correct.
I know the exact acreage.
But I did take a quick look at the plans, and there were 72 lots laid out. Now, part of the permit, one of the reasons I'm here is a tree board representative. It says that clearing and/or tree removal permits will not be issued prior to the acceptance of substantially complete application for a building permit. Now, Mr. Larson did say that they're only doing the roads at this time. And there is a partial tree survey which shows where the roads are going to be laid out. My concern is this is not a... This is not a Sea Colony or Sea Grove or even Island Hammock. This is the type of development you could find in the county where the property is just taken, density is calculated, determine the number of units. You do a loop road. You do a big retention pond in the middle of it. You use that dirt to fill the lower lots. So one of the things the tree board and our comprehensive plan and everything is trying to promote is that you just don't clear cut and fill. Now, citizens and I have objected to that and even asked for a code enforcement review of property between 5th and 6th on A1A Boulevard where there was a clear cutting and fill. Now, if it can be done on A1A Beach Boulevard, it can be done on the Fleeman Track. So I'm asking that you spend some time, talk to Mr. Larson about this project. Try and use the codes that are available to preserve what you can of the tree canopy. And he did indicate, and you could speak to him about this, that he was gonna bring this project back before you, even though there were some previous approvals. I appreciate your attention to this, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Ed Slaven, Box 3084. Hopefully we'll not be in the dark.
We are often. Thank you, Mr. Slaven.
Ed Slaven, Box 3084, edslaven.com. I've never spoken to this board before, so I just wanted to thank you for your service. I've been following it for years and reading the extensive things in the back every city commission meeting. And I wanted to call your all's attention to something that we can hopefully do in the next couple of years to solve a lot of the problems that y'all deal with here every week or every month, however often y'all are here. And that is the St. Augustine National Historical Park and National Seashore. We have a website, staugustgreen.com. And what I did was reverse engineer the Cape Cod National Seashore legislation and the New Bedford Whaling National Historical Park legislation. And it would involve protecting some of our existing government lands in two counties, Flagler and St. John's County, about 130,000 acres. And it would mean that the existing water management district lands, the existing state parks, the existing state forests, places that are holy places that are pretty much like they were when Menendez marched through here on his way south to do you-know-what. And when the Spanish came here in 1565, preserve it as pretty much as it was then, including some spectacular forests that are water management district lands that are at risk, including state parks that are at risk. Some people want to have hunting in them. Some people want to have condos in them. Some people want to put... Well, former Senator Thrasher wanted to put golf courses in our state parks. And my position is we are blessed already as Florida with 1,200 golf courses, some of which are losing money. We don't need that. And we certainly don't... We don't need golf courses in state parks. And we don't need hunting in state parks. So this would protect that. And it would basically involve, when you look at the map, your existing government lands, protecting them and preserving them forever, protecting the tree canopy, protecting everything that we know in land, protecting our beach here in St. Augustine. Now, you know our pier is gonna need replacing in about five years.
Really?
And we need a pier that can reach out far enough to where, when re-nourishment is done, your fishing line can reach the sea rather than the sand. And the concept for that, and I've talked about it with Ackerman Center and their name partner, the head partner in Miami who's in charge of this project, the very controversial project involving the height limit. My thought is, why not trade their air rights? I'm sorry? I couldn't hear you, Mr. Whitehouse. Why not trade their... Please pay attention. Why not trade their air rights? Trade the development rights, the six acres that they've got. They could trade to the city and the county park. And you'd have a continuous park then from pier park all the way to the state park. That six acres, rather than being interrupting it with a Berlin Wall, would be part of it. And with federal legislation, the St. Augustine National Historical Park and National Seashore Act, and I've talked to Nissen Kasten, he's the attorney for the developer. He said it would require federal legislation. I said exactly, because in, under current Florida law, you can't build a structure over the ocean. But you could combine in a public-private partnership at that location, a hotel over top of the pier, like they have elsewhere. And that hotel could cover the restaurants, fishing, the National Civil Rights Museum, any number of things.
Ten more seconds?
Thank you very much. And please check it out, talk to me, call me, staugustgreen.com. And it was first proposed by Mayor Walter Fraser of St. Augustine in 1939 and by Senator Claude Pepper. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Just a quick note, the previous pier, I believe, was nearly twice as long as the current pier, and it fell into the ocean in about two months, which is the reason they built this shorter pier, I think. Very good. We have new business coming to order?
Chairman, I had another request for public comment.
We do. We have one more.
You don't need to submit this for public comment, but if you want to speak, you can get up and speak now.
Please state your name and where you live.
Thank you. My name is Jan Brown. I'm at 24 Lockhart Lane, which is in St. Augustine Beach, right across from Ron Parker Park. And I'm here for something that I don't think has been brought to you all yet, but there is organization going on, so I wanted to take an opportunity to speak to you. There's a talk about putting a skate park in Ron Parker Park, and you'll see from my testimony that I'm not going to go through, that there are a number of people opposed to it, greatly opposed to it, including my neighborhood. My neighborhood is right across the street. And right now, we're in the phase of organizing. We're getting petitions together. We have some lawyers involved. It's getting to be more than I think it should be. So I'm just really presenting today the possibility that there's gonna be a problem, that there's a conflict going on right now. And I guess when it's eventually proposed, that there'll be a number of other, more than just myself, speaking. I'm right now here for myself, my husband, and about 15 of my neighbors. So that's really all I had to say, except I do ask you to please read this. And if you have any questions, you all feel free to call me. And I've invited all of you to come to our neighborhood so you can hear and experience our quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Are there any other public comments at this time? Now we'll move on to new business. Conditional use file number CU2016-03, proposed new construction of two single-family residences on lots 15 and 17, Block 38, Coquenaux Gables subdivision in a commercial land use district at 14F and 16F Streets, both 14F and 16F Streets, 810 Beach Inc., which is, I guess, our mayor, Mr. O'Brien, is the opposite?
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, Mr. and Mrs. O'Brien. I'll take foot and for you a request for your consideration of a conditional use to allow residential properties to be built on a commercial zoned parcel. The intersection is located on the northeast corner of F Street and A1A Beach Boulevard. Mr. Mithers corrected me. I took everything off of the actual plat maps. The survey you have in there reflects that the lots are like 96.8-something instead of, basically, the, excuse me, 46.89, I believe it is, instead of the 50, which will not interfere with anything that they plan to do. Mr. Royal is not here right now. He has researched every conditional use that has been placed before the Planning and Zoning Board and the City Commission for residential. Not one time has it been denied. The subject property is basically, I just rounded it off, 100 by 93. And as you are aware, we have had numerous problems with these smaller lots in the city trying to take and put a commercial business into them due to parking issues and whatever uses may take and possibly take and come forth. Mrs. Johnson, Cora Johnson, is going to take and be actually representing the O'Briens in this matter. Staff, basically, going back and looking at what we approved in the past, and this request that is before you, staff recommends you take and provide a recommendation of approval to the City Commission for the units. It's gonna be the best use of the property due to size. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Gary.
Yes.
In the packet, I believe there's an error. I pulled the county maps on these parcels, and can you just clarify? In the packet, it says each of the two lots in this parcel measure 100 feet by 93 feet. But on the county, it shows 93 approximately by 50 on each. So the total would be 100 by 93.
Yeah, the two lots, each of the two lots in this parcel, which is the two lots, measures 100 by 93. That's the overall parcel size.
Each or total? Because when I pulled the...
They're 50 by 93, aren't they?
They're 50 by 93, so they measure 100 by 93 for the two lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
I think there's a little bit of an error in our packet. It makes it each of the two lots measure 100 by 93. Looks like you're doubling.
My error.
Clarify that.
You're right.
It's 100 by 93 for the two parcels.
Total, total, yeah. Thank you.
Based on plat maps.
Thank you.
Take it, you're Cora?
I am. Good evening. I'm Cora Johnston. I'm the owner and contractor of Generation Homes, 740 A1A Beach Boulevard, Units C and D. I'm here on behalf of 810 Beach Incorporated, which is Lauren Ringheaver and Rich O'Brien. We are seeking a conditional use permit to build two private, single-family residences on commercially zoned property. The property is lots 15 and 17, Block 38. I've brought some displays. This is an aerial of the site. Currently, there is a building on the site which is being used as single-family residence.
You know, what's the square footage of the building that's currently on there?
I do not have the square footage of the existing building. Oh, you know what? I may have it, though. Let me look.
That and the square footage of each individual lot would be really important to be accurate.
I have the square footage of each individual, if you do the math.
Guessing about 4,000 and change?
It's 49 point... 49 and change by 93 and change on the front one, and 50 and change by 93 and change on the rear eastern.
And currently, the heated and cooled square footage of the existing building is 2064, 2064. So with this diagram, we're representing that all of the lots around it, except the one across the street, are all currently single-family residences. And so our plan is to remove the existing building and place a single-family home on each of the lots. This is a photograph of the current residence. The building was built in 1978 and basically has no architectural value. However, with the two new homes, the goal is to create a very lovely presence to the entrance of the F Street, which will complement then the existing homes that are currently on the road.
What's the total square footage under roof of each of those houses?
May I get that from my...
No problem. I'm just curious.
The one on the left is...
Lot 17?
Uh-huh. Is 3,062 square feet AC and 4,392 under roof.
392.
Uh-huh. We have...
Lot 17.
Two balconies on the front, two porches on the front, and two porches on the back of the residence, which are all included along with garage in that square footage. The house on the right is 2,674 square feet AC and 4,285 square feet under roof.
I believe Mr. Spencer has a question?
I'm just curious. So I know you're representing them right now here. You're also building the homes. You're a builder, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've been involved from the beginning with planning and working with the designer on the houses.
Is your company built those two houses on 3rd Street off of 2nd Avenue?
No, sir. I built a house on D Street.
Generation X.
Or how about Generation Homes?
I just turned into a space explorer. Sorry about that.
Exactly.
That's the only...
No, sir, I did not build those homes.
I was just trying to get that clear in my mind. Thank you. That's...
And then, in addition, we do have a petition from the neighbors that is in support of selling the homes. Thank you. So basically, we are requesting your recommendation for approval of the conditional use permit to use commercially zoned property, which is currently being used as residential for residential purposes. Because there is construction and development involved in 810 Beach Incorporated, we would like to request that the conditional use permit be transferable and run with the land as part of the recommendation for approval.
May I ask a question of Mr. Larson? We're not approving any house plans here. That's nothing to do with anything, is that correct? Just a zoning.
You're just considering a recommendation to the commission.
Thank you.
Do you have a site plan for us?
We have not gone to developing a site plan at this time.
So if we approve a conditional use, does the site... The site plan doesn't come back before us, correct, Gary?
No, it does not.
And I'm guessing that the building parameters, setbacks, and all those are applied are the current code, not the old code, right?
Current.
Okay, so... And your recommendation, Gary, is to approve this based on what the properties adjacent have been approved for?
Right, that and also it's gonna be the best use of the property because it's too small for commercial use.
And currently, it's a residence and a business?
No, it is a residence.
Just strictly a residence?
Yes, sir.
What are the lots next to it? Are they all residential?
It is. It's single-family homes.
Down the street, I just drove down that street about a half hour ago. Ran into one of the neighbors who was unaware of what was going on. But there's a three-story home on Lot 13, a three-story home on Lot 11, a three-story home on Lot 9.
Oh, I know there are houses there.
And then across the street to the south.
I'm talking about how are they zoned?
It depends on whether you're talking about going east or going along the Boulevard and how far back into the Boulevard, going east you're talking about.
Right. No, going east. I'm well aware, because of what came before this board of going west, that many of those lots going four back were commercial, but they had houses on them.
East is all commercial, correct?
East? Yeah, towards the ocean, east down the street, I believe, would be all residential after Lot 15.
150 feet off the center line of A1A is a commercial.
Thank you.
So what you're saying is it is currently residential, but it's zoned commercial? So they're asking for a change in the zone?
In a commercial location, conditional use is required to make a residential structure.
Right, I understood that. What I don't understand is the way the letter is worded, is that they're asking us to determine the best use of the property. Is that within the purview of this board to determine best uses of property? Mr. Whitehouse?
No, I would say that what you're determining is whether or not the requested use is an appropriate use in this location, and that's what recommendation you're making to the City Commission.
All right, thank you. That sounds much better than the way it was phrased here.
Ms. Johnson, is both driveways gonna exit or enter from F Street, correct? Nothing will be from A1A?
Not from the A1A or the alleyway in the back, no.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a quick question for Gary. Given, like the property that's on the end of E Street that buffers A1A, there'll be landscaping and palm trees along the western side of that particular lot, Lot 17, much like the landscaping that's done for the residents?
The avenue palms will be put in.
So they're gonna put some palm trees in the right of way?
City will, yes.
The city right of way there?
And the owners have paid particular attention to the architecture on that side of the house. So they are planning some, you know, not just a solid wall. There's some ins and outs. There's Bahamas shutters. They're very concerned about making sure that it creates a nice architectural presence whilst you're driving down A1A.
I guess I just have a couple of quick comments. I mean, we are removing a single structure that has a little over 2,000 square feet.
May I ask, David, do you want to go to public comment first?
Okay. Public comment? Oh, if she's done. Is she done?
Are you done?
Are you done, Ms. Johnson?
Are you done, Ms. Johnson? Sorry. We didn't want to cut you off. I just wanted to make sure.
Now we'll put it out for public comment.
I feel out of cards. Tom Reynolds, 888-1A Beach Boulevard. I would urge the board to vote yes, and I base that on two reasons. The final outcome will make that whole area look very beautiful. And anybody who knows the owner knows that he keeps his other properties extremely beautiful. It adds a lot of class to the whole neighborhood. And also, two folks, I'm one who likes to allow people that own the property to do what they want to do with their property. Thank you.
Additional speakers?
Speaker would be John Carvelis, if I pronounce that right. I hope I'm close. I hope I'm close, anyway.
No, you're running out of money. John Carvelis from 4F Street. And so I'm speaking just as a neighbor. When Rich showed me the plans, I was thrilled because it seemed like an upgrade without really an increase in density. And it's, both buildings look great and look consistent with the whole street, which we've only owned there three years, but we have surely fallen in love with. And I also thank all of you for your work as building administrators. And that's it. Thank you.
David, would you mind if I just ask a question of staff real quickly? I don't know, Bonnie, if you handle this, but I don't think our video feed is working.
The livestream is not working.
I broke it.
I hope not. The next speaker would be Lauren Ringheaver.
Hi, thank you. I just want to let you all know that the building we have there is very old, and it was New Look Salon when I was a little girl, growing up, coming here. So in order to ever do much to that building, it's like trying to make a chicken a cow. So this way, we'll add some lovely residential homes to the area and build up the neighborhoods and keep the consistency of proper landscaping and shielding it from, you know... So it really doesn't matter what size the present building is, how many square feet, because you're not involved in making those decisions on our design or build. But Generation Homes has a great reputation, and they're great people to work with. Thanks again for serving.
Thank you.
And I have one more speaker, Mr. Craig Thompson.
Craig Thompson, number 60 Street. I wanted to say this earlier, but quality of...
this earlier, but quality of life and tree canopy preservation, what's involved, what does it take? It takes a community, but it takes interested citizens. It takes informed volunteer city boards, such as yourself, and informed means, understanding the codes and what's required, a supportive city staff, and responsible city commissioners. That's what's going to preserve and maintain the natural beauty of our city and avoid the syndrome of becoming another, yet another, anywhere USA. I do live in the neighborhood. I live on D Street. I took the opportunity this afternoon to go over and look at the property. This is all pretty recent, the plans for the buildings, et cetera. But I did, I appreciate the work that's been done. I kind of, I do want to compliment the mayor and his wife for trying to improve the property, and I think it has a lot of potential. My concern, and I've voiced it before, is a lot of the new buildings are being overdeveloped, overdeveloping these small lots. So there's that issue. There's also the issue that this is the A1A Beach Boulevard. We have a vision plan about how that should be developed, and you have to consider appropriate use based on the boulevard as a whole. There have been some single-family residences built on that. One of the things the vision plan says is that entrances should face the boulevard. This is very involved, but to go back to basics, we could say you have two 50-foot wide lots, and you have an adjacent resident on the boulevard to the immediate north. That is a two-story residence. The setback from the property line on that residence is approximately 13 feet. There are 15 palm trees planted, so the building is basically camouflaged, and it's only a two-story residence. It's not that you don't want to see beautiful architecture or some improvements to the site, but at this point, you don't have a site plan, and you don't know what the elevation of this Lot 17 is. So I would suggest you get a side elevation, that you look at a site plan, you consider the avenue of palms, but you also need to consider, this is increasing the density intensity of that piece of property considerably, and it is going to be on view for all the traffic of the city. So I think you could use a little more information. You definitely need to know if the setbacks are new or old, if there's pools, and if there's landscaping plans going into the property. I could talk on in more detail about it. I, again, you know, I live in the neighborhood. There are issues with commercial. I can see the pros and cons of how it should be developed. I just think you have to be aware of the vision plan, and you have to be aware that the current building setbacks are allowing overdevelopment of the sites.
Your time is up.
Eliminating any landscaping.
Finish, please.
That include with pools and driveways, which are not counted as impervious surface, is creating an issue. The fact that a lot of these are rented, and there'd be parking issues with that, is an issue. So take these issues under consideration. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, it looks like. Mr. Slaven, please.
Ed Slaven, Box 3084, edslaven.com. I agree with Craig Thompson, and there's no principled reason why you have to approve this tonight. He raised some very good issues, and I think they need to be brought out. And the problem is, it's the mayor. You don't want to rubber stamp something and be seen as a rubber stamp just because it's the mayor. And in fact, the chair, when the meeting began, referred to the mayor as Mayor O'Brien. Looking back in the City of St. Augustine minutes, in the Historic Society Research Library, I found instances where public officials, including commissioners, appeared before PZBs or Harbs, and the members of those boards deferred to them and referred to them as Commissioner Kritzlo and gave him anything he wanted. Okay? That's corruption, guys, and we don't want that. And calling your attention to the 1978 publication of the Law Enforcement Assisted Administration: Corruption in Building and Zoning. They looked at places like Fairfax County, Virginia, where there was rapid growth, and there seemed to be a correlation between places with rapid growth and later subsequent prosecutions for federal crimes like bribery by the Justice Department and the FBI. So, and you realize, the FBI is investigating. There is a Daytona Beach agent. There is a task force. There's an FBI Corruption Task Force in Daytona Beach headed by Special Agent Dave Brown. Anybody within the sound of my voice who knows about corruption should contact them, because they're certainly interested in that. But bottom line is, I think the last speaker made some very good points, and we've got these McMansions being built, you know, that are way too tall and way too big and cover way too much of the lot. And you don't want to be rubber stamping that, because the people in this community, and I was in the room here, and I had suggested it actually some years ago, the 35-foot limit. And there was a lady from University of Central Florida, Marilyn Crotty, who tried to cut this community off at the knees and say, "You don't want to pass anything that ties the hands of the public officials." And I said, "Ma'am, that's exactly why we have constitutions and bills of rights, and that's why we have city charter." So the people in this community voted 60 or 70 percent to have that 35-foot limit. So anything that's too big or, you know, just too much, y'all should ask questions about. And finally, with respect to the staff, this is James George Whitehouse's last meeting here. He's from a firm that represents developers, and you've been getting really bad legal advice from Doug Burnett's law firm for all this time. I look forward to Mr. Wilson being the city attorney next month, and when he is, you can get independent legal advice. But the other problem I have is the staff here. A leaf blew in their window once, and they signed it. And the problem I have, that's from Earl Long, talking about Huey Long, public governor. But the problem I have is your staff here always comes up here to make a recommendation for the developer. You ought to make them come up and make a recommendation, pro and con. Let's have pros and cons, and let them give you a resolution for each proposal, if you're going to approve it and if you're going to deny it. That's not too much to ask. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. No, your time is up.
Appreciate it.
I have no more speaker cards.
Very good. I guess I'm certain there's some opinions here on the board. Berta, would you like to start?
I can. We may have to go back around, but, you know. Just a observation is what I'd like to talk about, is that a couple of months ago, we had the Kukaburra issue. It went before the commission. There was a lot of talk about the traffic and on F Street, crossing, the parking, which is not allowed. If this, the parking, whether they have, if they rent it, long-term or short-term rentals, there's going to be a problem with parking and a lot more traffic. And that was the main concern, that Kukaburrs did not get what they wanted because of the traffic and the parking. And the, what came before us was a gentleman that was on, built his home on a commercial lot and a residential, and that's how it all started. So I just, you know, there's a lot of things that could develop here, but that's my concern at this particular moment. And we don't have a site plan, and I'm just not comfortable with things that have come before us in the past and we'd agreed to, and it got changed. And I'm just not comfortable with that. Zach?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I tend to kind of agree that, you know, I agree with, it slams the residential properties into the existing commercial properties. And I think commercial property, especially smaller commercial property, is kind of a rare thing on the beach. But, you know, that being said, you know, I know they haven't, there hasn't been a lot really commercial run out of there in a long time. The woman there cut my hair and did a fabulous job.
She did?
Lot to be said for that.
I know, I know.
She hasn't been there in a long time.
So, you know, I do look at, you know, I look at the houses, and I do think that's an improvement on the lot. And, you know, I do worry about some of the height things that are in the city charter, and they're not being, now I feel like, I just feel like this board needs to be more sensitive to grade than we've been asked to be in the past, because it wasn't in the charter, and then it kind of comes back on us. So I think there's just some questions that maybe need to get, for us to do our due diligence, there's a few more questions that we would need to ask or get answers to.
The deed is for one item that includes two lots. And then what's before us is the potential to build two houses. So, I mean, I think, again, to clarify, as Mr. Whitehouse said, we're just being asked to provide the conditional use of allowing a commercial area to be used as residential. I have no objection to that. I understand what my colleagues are saying, is they're concerned about what will then go up on the lot, which I don't think is before the board at the moment. Correct?
You know, I'm not certain that there's a version of a structure, but I've been given heated and cooled square footage, and I've been given total square footage, which means there's a footprint for these two homes. You simply cite that footprint on the lot, and then you know what the coverage is. So it's clear to me, the intent to build these two homes is there. And I think they have every right to build residential properties on these lots under the conditional use allowed. My concern is we're replacing a 2,000, give or take, square foot structure with 8,000 square foot of two single-family residential homes. So we're tripling the volume of mass currently there. We're subdividing it into two lots, and we're building two single-family homes that are add them out to three times the structure that's currently there. Each of these two homes has a two-car garage and a driveway for two more cars, so we're likely producing at least four to eight cars for the two single-family homes. That's certainly within their right. They are allowed to have two-car garages. The precedent that this sets for the beaches where I really get concerned. It's been clear by examples in the past that we want to move away from residential structures on the boulevard. It's also clear by what they let happen on F Street, that the sitting example of residential structures built out through the boulevard is directly behind these lots. So if there is an argument in favor of residential structures on commercial lots, it would be in these kind of locations where you're backing up to other residential structures. The example to the south of this is clearly commercial. All the way off the boulevard, there's no residential structures. The examples to the north of this, on F Street, on the other side of F Street, on C Street, B Street, almost all the way down, less the parking lots that have been cleared for Mango Mangos, it's commercial use all the way down. So I think the argument is in favor of residential to be allowed on these. My concern is the mass, the volume, the size, the scope, given with the new code that's allowed. We're putting three times as much structure in the same space. If this were critiqued on a commercial property zoning, I don't think you'd be allowed to put that much mass into that commercial location. You certainly wouldn't have enough parking for it. So I think the size, scope, and the scale is concerning, but as long as it meets the requirements that are set by the building code enforcement, and that's where I'm concerned about the rules that we have implemented currently, allowing homes to be too large, too much volume, too much coverage. And these, both these homes, I believe, would be taking advantage of the new rules, rightfully so. Those are the rules that they get to go by. But I think they should be critiqued because of where they are, particularly the one that has the side against the boulevard. And as was probably the people that build the single-family residence on F Street, a requirement to landscape on that side of the house that goes beyond the row of palms on the boulevard. Apart from that, I don't see anything that prevents them from having the right to do this. And I think the example's been set that would allow them to. That's my two cents.
I think that we're here just to change the zoning, and on that score, I really have no problem with allowing that. Will the houses be a little large? Yes, they will. The setbacks are the setbacks, the change setbacks, not the old ones. That's just the way it is. We're having a meeting with the land planner tomorrow. Maybe in a while, they'll change the setbacks. But right now, that's not the case. So it seems to me, personally, I probably have to say yes. That's all I have to say.
And I'm always last.
With a name like Xander, I'm last in everything. When I was in kindergarten, they called people by, told us to line up by height. I was last then, too. I disagree with some of my fellow board members. I have actually a number of concerns on this request. The first is that I do think that it is an inadequate package. I think that we should have a very detailed site plan. This is a conditional use. So understand, a conditional use means that we set the requirements. We can put any and all requirements on there that we want. I mean, this is a conditional use. And so there's no right to build a residential on this site. There's no right to have a number of garages. There's no right to do this. The zoning, in fact, prohibits it. It's a non-conforming use. So therefore, they're before us trying to build what is a non-conforming use. A site plan should be in the packet with lot coverage, impervious surface coverage, buffer requirements between the uses, the commercial and the residential. So in my mind, this is an inadequate package, and I really can't support it as is, because I have no idea what would be built on there. I also have a problem with this being a conditional use. I don't think conditional use is the appropriate way to approach this. If I read, I'm a stickler for our land development code. I don't like to just make things up. And I'm also a stickler for consistency. So the land development code, when you look at conditional use, it starts out by saying in the conditional use section that it shouldn't be permanent. Well, obviously, if you're going to build a non-conforming structure on this lot, it's permanent. I don't think a conditional use is the right way to approach this ask. Once it's there, it's there. It changes the use of those lots. I also would like to know, Gary, how long has this been, the structure that's existing, how long has that been a residential non-conforming use on a commercial zoning parcel?
I cannot give you the exact date on that.
Because you got your haircut there, so it was a commercial use. How long?
1978.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
But there was hairdresser, and then there was tattoos, a poller tattoo, I think, since then.
So that's what I'm asking. How long ago did it become residential, if it was commercial? How did it become residential in a commercial before?
I cannot give you an answer to that. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's fair. Thanks. So that's a concern for me. How do we have residential on a commercial zoning, which is non-conforming? Here, when Obie's came before us, and we all know which parcel that is, staff gave us a recommendation in the packet for approval because there were no concerns with parking or parcel size, and that's a .17 acre parcel. And that was approved for commercial, for an expansion of commercial usage parcel. This one is bigger than that. So when we have in our packet that the overall size does not warrant a positive use for commercial businesses due to sizes of structures and parking requirements, I have an issue with consistency on that. That, to me, is a very inconsistent way to apply our LDRs. If we were asked to expand the existing commercial use on a .17 acre parcel, and this board approved that, that's a problem for me. I think that A1A street frontage is different than lots that go further off of A1A. I agree with one of the speakers that the usage as a whole along the boulevard is what needs to be taken into consideration, not the immediate surrounding parcels. However, if we look across the street, kitty corner across the street from that lot, there is a commercial usage, and that building was here before, that owner of that building was here before us a month or two ago, and also before the commission in February, asking for a conditional use to put a deck on his parcel. That usage, that commercial usage on a commercially zoned parcel across the street and across F Street from this parcel, met the zoning code, and the mayor made a motion to deny the conditional use of that he was, that the owner was requesting when the commission had it. And according to the mayor, the neighborhoods matter in And according to the mayor, the neighborhoods matter in this community, not allowing the rezoning of lots to commercial. I fail to see how rezoning something again the next month and ask to rezone something again the next month from commercial to residential, which will actually increase the problems along the Boulevard. One of the problems with the Kukaburra when they came before us was that there were, there was a residence allowed to be built on a commercially zoned parcel next door to the Kukaburra building. So the Kukaburra was in compliance with their zoning. But the residence was allowed to be constructed on that commercial parcel right next door. And now the resident owner, residence owner, doesn't like the commercial usage that's right next to him. So here we have someone who's asking to do exactly that. When, as mayor, he voted, made the motion to deny the approval for the business right across the street. I just, I am flabbergasted by that. I look at the LDR and the, page one, says, "Consistency with plan. Nothing in this section shall be construed to authorize development that is inconsistent with the St. Augustine Beach comprehensive plan." So non-conforming use is inconsistent with the plan. When I go to "non-conforming use" section on 10.01.01, it says, "It is the intent of this code to permit these non-conforming uses to continue until they are removed, but not to encourage their survival." So if you're going to tear down the building and put up another, I think it isn't supported by our code. "Non-conforming uses are declared to be incompatible with permitted uses in the districts involved and shall not be extended or enlarged." Again, I'm all for consistency and following the code, and I don't think the code supports making this recommendation. It also states in 10.03.02, "Limitations on granting conditional use permits." The first sentence, "Conditional use permits shall be non-transferable and granted to the applicant only. The conditional use permit will be transferable and run with the land when the facts involve warrant same or where construction or land development is included as part of the permit." Is some of the things that we could potentially change for a conditional use. But the first thing says, "Conditional use permit shall be non-transferable and granted to the applicant only." So again, I don't believe that it's appropriate to ask for a conditional use on this. I don't think it's an appropriate use of conditional use. But my main concern is that we have a problem that this city created by allowing a residence to be constructed on a commercially zoned parcel right next to a commercial use, that's sitting on commercial zoneage, complying with its zoning, and then the residents in that building, in that residential building, don't like their commercial use right next door. By approving this, we would be adding to that problem. So I can't support this.
Does anybody else have a comment on the board?
Well, I'm looking at the same section that Ms. Sanders is referring to. The conditional use permits, 10.03.02. Under A and number one says, "The conditional use permit will be transferable and run with the land when the facts involve warrant same or where construction or land development is included as part of the permit." That kind of comes back to what we were saying, in that we feel we need to see more of what is proposed in order to approve this.
I believe that those are exceptions. I believe that, this is just my interpretation, okay? But when the conditional use permit section starts out by saying that they should be non-transferable and granted to the applicant only, however, we can put some conditions on it. I think those conditions should be exceptions. So one of the conditions that we could put on there is that it would be transferable and run with the land. But again, I believe that's an exception. But that's just my interpretation of this.
Well, the part I'm looking at is that it says, "Or where construction or land development is included as part of the permit." That's what we don't have before us, because I didn't see it as necessary. But if we look at that section, it appears to be necessary.
Well, in a conditional use permit, I believe that you need every single piece of information you can get, including lot coverage, impervious surface, buffer between uses, which is required, as I think David was pointing out.
Yeah, can I ask Mr. Larson, in number item eight, it's a supporting data which should be considered by the board. It says, "Two lots directly behind the two lots, those two lots that are on E Street, were granted a conditional use permit in 2001 for two residential homes." What were the requirements in that granting? Were there not site approvals? Was there not, you had?
No, simply elevations.
Elevations held to the previous code, not the current code? The size, scope, and volume of those two homes is a fraction of what's being proposed here.
No, that's covered by the LDRs when I come in for permitting. We just follow what's entitled there. We give you elevations for your information and your recommendation that the best use of the property, what it can be.
Because I guess, I mean, the example of a commercial property being conditionally used for residential properties is right there on F Street per conditional use permit. But I do agree with Ms. Sanders. Within the caveats of what the code reads, there's definitely some conflicts. This is in no way, shape, or form a temporary use. This is a forever change. And that does read very inconsistent with the motion.
Can I speak for a moment?
I think we can allow him to speak if you just.
It sounded like some people said they wanted more information, so you can.
Yeah, I think it would be good for you to come up and speak, Mr. O'Brien.
Rich O'Brien, A12, A1A Beach Boulevard. So a comment was made about the mayor. I'm the mayor, of course, you all know I'm the mayor. I did not intend to come up here tonight for that specific reason. Cora, who we've been working with on these beautiful homes, offered to come up and speak on her behalf, just for that reason. We have not decided on any design for these homes. Those were provided as a courtesy. Those are not our specific designs. Those are sort of file copies of things that we are very interested in. We have visited other similar homes under construction of a similar size and so on. We have scaled them way down. These homes are only three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom homes. They're not hotels. They're not grand mega mansions, or whatever the current term is, McMansion. They're very fitting for this neighborhood. Our neighbors are absolutely thrilled. If you would have a chance to look at that, the list of neighbors that have filled that out, it's the ugly duckling on the block. We have vetted out its use as a commercial structure, which, Gary, isn't commercial, 70% lot coverage.
Yes.
Yeah. So we could, we could put something on there that's commercial, that would be totally incompatible with the neighborhood. And let me tell you, I have vetted out the commercial use on that property. But again, if you look at the properties behind us, residential, all the way down the block, they're residential. In the design that we're looking at on the corner, we are going to, of course, comply with all the setbacks. We are known as landscapers. All of our properties are beautifully landscaped. Of course, they will be. Cora even mentioned, on the one model that we have that we're very interested in, it is stunning from the Boulevard. Anything else on the Boulevard actually would look not nearly as attractive as this would look. We feel like we have done an excellent job in presenting somewhat, something that would be extremely compatible to the neighborhood. And actually, there's nobody has been against it. Anybody, and I took that petition of support to several people, and they said, "Who would absolutely be against these beautiful, small homes, not McMansions, adding to our neighborhood?" Now, yes, it is commercially zoned. I went to Max, I went to Gary. I said, "How should we approach this?" They said, "Get the survey." It is not about what you're going to build on those lots. It is about, will they allow, will they recommend that you build residential, like the people behind, like the people across the street on F Street, like a number of people have, on that property and improve the city? If there was a legitimate, reasonable, realistic use of that as commercial, I think I would know that. I've been in this city for 14 years now. It is most compatible to do what we have presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. O'Brien, thank you for coming up. First off, I want to tell you, I think that you've so far done an excellent job as a mayor, and I look forward to you being the mayor. I think you're extremely well-qualified. I also think that it's clear that what you build and what you have on the Boulevard looks great. Absolutely. I think you've won beautification awards, if I remember correctly, so you take excellent care of your properties. I think that's absolutely true. But this is a conditional use. So it really is about what you're going to build by its nature. You're asking us to approve, to recommend a conditional use. So therefore, having more information is always good. And we can put conditions on a conditional use, again, by its nature. So I disagree with you when you've said to us that it's not about what you're going to build. It actually is, I believe, with a conditional use permit. And the usage that you're asking for frankly isn't compatible, because the zoning doesn't allow it. If it were compatible, the zoning would allow it. So I think by the very nature of you having to come here asking for us to rezone something, that makes it incompatible. That's not to say that it can't be done, but is it compatible with the properties as it stands right now? No. I also think that the zoning along the Boulevard was the choice of the city and the residents. We got to choose at some point how we wanted this zoned, and the zoning for that parcel is commercial. That was the choice of the city and the residents. I have a concern with the fact that those aren't your specific designs, because again, you're asking us for a conditional use. And you want that conditional use to be permanent, because it's a structure. It can't be non-transferable. So I have concerns with the fact that you don't have your designs. We don't know what you're building or how that's going to work.
They're not final designs. They're in CAD right now, 2,600 square feet and 3,100 square feet under roof. They're not big houses. There's porches and patios and, you know.
We should have those. We should have the site plan, because it's a conditional use. So therefore, we should have that information. We should have your impervious, impervious surface coverage. We should have the buffer requirements, how you're going to address those. Because you will have, now, you're going to have buffers between uses. We can put any and all requirements we want to on a conditional use. It's not a given. It's not, hey, I want to do this residential, and then we're free and clear. Conditional uses, by their very nature, have conditions. So again, I just, I don't think this is the appropriate use of a conditional use, and I think the packet is incomplete, and I don't frankly understand how we can increase the residential use on a commercial parcel and then have an issue with the property across the street, which does comply with zoning.
I think in response to that, things changed, and there are pockets in our city that are, have probably become more residential. I think this would complete that section of F Street. My neighbors think it would. Pretty much all the neighbors on F Street, east and west, every single person, except for one that was out of town, east of F Street on the Boulevard, said they were in favor of doing this. It is a small enclave, a small pocket, and I think that, my wife and I really worked pretty hard on this, actually, to come up with something that would improve our city. It's sort of the ugly duckling on the block, really in the area. We don't like that. We're sort of known for having kind of attractive properties. We work very hard and spend a lot of money doing that. So we feel like this is really just the right thing to do.
Well, again, though, the staff told us that Obie's, which is .17 acres, was plenty of room for its usage, and actually, we should, they recommended approval of expansion of that commercial use. So clearly, we have a precedent for the fact that a smaller commercial parcel is appropriate for commercial usage and actually, a lot more commercial usage, according to.
I think actually you're comparing apples to oranges.
I don't think so. That's commercial.
When, I mean, we're putting residential with two-car garages with driveways that can hold four more cars. Obie's created a nightmare when they first opened, as you well know. And they had at least, probably, I guess, I don't think they bought it, but they leased a lot next door to alleviate the parking problem. This is going to be a resident, two residential houses, not a hamburger store.
I understand, but part of the packet's information says that this does not warrant a positive use for commercial businesses due to size of structures and parking requirements. So we look at precedents, and we look at what we did on a smaller lot, and we increased, we were, the staff recommended increasing the coverage on that lot to increase the commercial use of that lot on a smaller lot. Now we're being told, well, clearly, this lot is too small. To me, that's extremely inconsistent, and frankly, as a mayor, I think you should be worried about that, because that inconsistency in applying our code always concerns me. That's a possible.
You realize I'm not here as the mayor, and I tried to make that clear. But when you talk about precedent, though, you're talking about the two lots directly behind this were given the same conditional use permit with nothing, no attachments to that whatsoever. Across the street on F Street, the Detras, were given a conditional use to build their house. If you talk about precedent, that's what we're talking about. We're going to build two nice, small houses in an appropriate area and an appropriate scale. Yeah, they're going to be 34 or whatever height. They're small houses. They have to be small, because the lots are small. And the buffer, the setbacks are going to be greater at this time. They're going to be greater than what is required under our current code.
But the use of a commercial building across the street and across F Street from you, where they did comply with their code, has proven problematic to the residents who built on their commercial properties, built residential structures. So the fact that the non-conforming use, the residential built on commercial, next to that commercial structure right across the street from you, is an issue for residents, that concerns me, because you're asking to do the very same thing. You're asking to put residential on commercial, which caused the problem for the business owner across the street.
But there is no commercial, I mean, you're talking about, these houses are on the Boulevard and one back. There's nothing around it to create any conflict.
Now.
Yeah. I mean, what were you thinking?
You don't, you don't, you don't know what's going to go in there. You mean, you, by asking for a conditional use and making it permanent, which is what would happen here, transferable, run with the land, you're asking for a permanent non-conforming use.
Based on my information from staff, from Max, from Gary, on how to proceed to build two small, beautiful houses in that small enclave at F Street, with the precedent of the two other houses directly behind.
I think the precedent that was set some 15 years ago was a bad precedent, and set a bad example of bad zoning and bad conditional use. That being said, it is what it is, and it exists where it is. And so the consideration to allow residence use of a current commercial spot that butts up against it certainly should be considered. The long-term disposition of this conditional use is absolute and certain. This isn't a temporary condition. This is a permanent change, forever. And I think the fact that it is a permanent change and is a conditional use on this property, it does have conflicts within the written code as it's scripted, gives us the, commands us to govern it a little bit more and give it a little bit more control if we're going to allow the change from commercial to residential. So I think the discussion might go further along the lines of what Ms. Sanders is talking about. We need to understand what's going to be built. When you say these aren't big houses, these are the absolute maximum allowable size homes you could build on these lots. So I don't understand where, you're saying they're not large homes, but in the same breath, you say they're three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, three stories, 34 feet tall.
They're not to the full extent that we could build them, no.
And that's, that's where I'm saying, no, you can't, because we have an ability to control the size, scope, and scale of what goes on the Boulevard. And if we're using the new code that we have, which we've all agreed, or at least most of us have agreed, has let homes get too large, has let too much massing on lots, has allowed percentage of volume of lot coverage, scope, setbacks, all to be manipulated to where the average size of the homes that have been built over the last two or three years at this beach, I think we all agree, is too big.
There are some that are.
On the size of the lots they're being built on.
There are some that are, yeah.
So I think if we are to approve this conditional use, and I use that word "if," going back going back to 2001, some 15 years ago, where the rules apparently seem to have been somewhat haphazardly applied, because there's only two circumstances I'm aware of on the Boulevard where there's residences abutting up to A1A. It's at F Street, and then over, near Obie's, one block to the north, both of those have been problematic. There's been complaints about them. There's been issues about them. There's been consideration of revising the avenue plan and the LDR and not allowing residential structures to be built on commercial lots because of those issues. The examples that's been set on F Street, I think, puts us into a position where we must consider it because it's clearly been allowed to be done right behind you, and I think it certainly should also be considered by us, but with probably more information, a site plan, specific setbacks of each individual home, and whether we're going to be meeting the new code or the old code. You say you can put a 70% lot coverage with a commercial structure, but that's one building, not two buildings, not two residences, so.
I didn't interject.
No.
You can unless you're at the podium. I think that we should consider the conditional use, but we need more information as to what's going to be built in order to consider it. I'll let some other opinions here, but if we're going to move forward with approving, and I think it's a bad example to set the precedent to approve residential structures on the Boulevard in commercial locations, so this shouldn't be an example of what we continue to do. This should be only considered because of F Street being in the condition that it is. If F Street weren't that way, I'd think it'd be an absolute no. Because of F Street being the way it is, I think we should consider it.
Let me bring us back to, and again, if I get Mr. Whitehouse's opinion, Section 10.0302. This board has to rule based on the regulations, not what we necessarily like or not like. And, and it does, as Ms. Sanders pointed out, say that conditional use permits are non-transferable, granted to the applicant only. We can make it transferable to run with the land where construction or land development is included as part of the permit. So, doesn't that mean that we need to have that information in order to make it?
No.
Transferable?
No. I would tell you that clearly, this is an application that's asking for land development or construction. There's no question about that. So, the point of the code is that if it's going to be a permanent structure on the land, attached to the land, that it should be transferable. In other words, you don't put somebody in a situation where you build a permanent structure on a piece of property and grant the permit as not transferable. That doesn't make sense. That's why the code provides for that. To go back as far as, you know, what kind of things you can ask for, what you can require, obviously, every applicant is required to meet the standards and regulations of the code. I've heard a lot of talk about parking and a lot of talk about setbacks and a lot of talk about lot coverage and things like that. Clearly, this applicant's not coming forward, at least at this time, asking for any type of variances or any type of exceptions from the code. Other than for this use, that's why I told you when you asked me earlier, what are we considering today? I said, we're considering whether or not this use is appropriate in this particular location. You know, obviously, conditional use permits, this board makes a recommendation to the City Commission. The City Commission is the one who's going to make the decision whether or not to approve the conditional use permit. Any kind of recommendations you have as far as whether there should be conditions on the granting by the board, you could put those forward to the Commission in either a recommendation of approval or denial. And I think that, you know, some of the comments I've heard, as I said, I just need to caution you, you need to stick to the code. You don't, you can't just force somebody to do something small because that's what you feel is appropriate there. I think you, the main, the main consideration is whether or not the use is appropriate there. Once you get past beyond the use, there may be some other conditions that you feel you'd like to recommend to the Commission to consider for, such as landscaping or, you know, you know, certain setback or whatever, but like I said, they, they're going to have to meet the code regardless, and so I think that's where you need to bring your, when it comes back to the Board, your discussion, your consideration.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
So, again, on a conditional use, though, we don't know, you're asking to change the zoning on a conditional use, so.
Let me, let me just, let me just, let me correct that. I've heard that a few times. I've heard the term rezoning. I've heard the term change the use. That's not what this is. This is not a rezoning. This is not changing a use. This is asking for a conditional use permit to, to build a residential structure in a commercially-zoned category. That's what the code provides for. This applicant has filled out an application and brought that before you. You can discuss all the things you're discussing. I'm just cautioning you to keep that within the code because that's what your consideration is constrained by.
Thank you. So, you're asking to make, change the use of this from commercial to residential when you ask for a conditional use permit to build a residential structure, which would be a non-conforming use on a commercial structure as it stands right now. So, therefore, I understand the setbacks must be followed. I understand all that, but you know what? When you come before us with a conditional use, I want to see the lot coverage. I want to see the impervious surface. I want to see the buffer. And frankly, the City Commission cracked down on us and weren't happy with us for approving some big projects in the past year. Perhaps we didn't have enough information, so I don't think that I want to make that mistake again. I think that this is the incorrect use of conditional use, and I think that you have a history of doing an incredible job on your properties, so I wonder why, if you would consider perhaps doing something that really follows the vision plan, which is, when I read the vision plan, what it encouraged was commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. That would be something that would fall right in line with the vision plan. What a great thing that would be if that would come before us, if somebody wanted to do that. Personally, I'm just speaking for myself. That would completely change, I think, the discussion.
If I could respond, I think that that would be totally incompatible with the east side of the Boulevard, and I don't think one of the people that signed that petition of support for this would be in favor of that. I just don't think, maybe on the west side, whatever, Cucabara, the real estate company, yes, but as I say, that's a small enclave, a residential. I don't think that would fit. I've looked into that. It's, to me, an incompatible use.
But, Mr. O'Brien, it's on a, it's on a commercial lot that you're here for, and reading the vision, vision plan, that's what the vision plan lays out. So, I'm just saying.
When it was originally platted, I believe it was platted as two residential. I know that the zoning is commercial, but if you look at all the lots up and down, up and down, they're 50 by 93, and that alley is vacated, by the way. The alley is vacated, and I have the survey that shows that. They're platted for homes. At some point, they came along and said, okay, this side is this, this side's that. But we, when we bought that, we bought it actually at some point, like now, to build two homes, nice homes, on the, on that property, so.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, one more clarification. This is not, I, I've heard this a couple of times, too, about whether or not commercial's appropriate there, whether it should be commercial, or whether the staff said anything about whether commercial couldn't be done there. This is not a competition of whether or not this should be commercial. The application is for a residential use, conditional use permit for a residential use in a commercially-zoned zoning category. And so, that's what the consideration should be, not whether or not commercial is appropriate there. That's not what's been asked for, and so I think whether or not it's appropriate, that's not what the applicant's asking for. The applicant's asking whether or not they may do a residential use in a commercially-zoned.
I mean, I want to be clear, he's going to put up two large, single-family homes where there's one small commercial business or a commercial structure. It's fully allowable, as I see it, but there's no question, when it's a conditional use, the ability to control what is built there, above and beyond just the standard setbacks and applications, is clearly there, and they're for good reason, because if we didn't, people could be recklessly building commercial or residential, whatever, and we could have a three-story side with one or two windows and nothing but three stories of hardy planks staring at the Boulevard. And I don't think anyone wants to see that in as example of what we have up and down our main thorough through in any way, shape, or form, and if not for the, once again, I believe, the erroneous decision to allow two residential properties to be built on F Street, this wouldn't even be a consideration. I'd say absolutely not. These lots were zoned commercial. They should be, they're used commercial, but the standing example is the two properties you back up to on F Street. Both have single-family homes. Both are two-story, not three-story, as I see them and remember them. Both are probably at least 1,500, 2,000 square foot less than each of the two homes you're looking to build, so your home will be dominant in size to both of them, quite a bit bigger, quite a bit larger, quite a bit taller. That's going to look a little disproportionately uneven up and down the Boulevard when you have a two-story structure right against the Boulevard and right behind it, right on the Boulevard, a three-story structure all the way up to the edge. With us not implementing any type of third, fourth setbacks and minimizing third, fourth volumes, the mass, the scope, the scale is getting a bit much, and I think, given that the conditional use is the only way you could build residential, we should reserve the right to have some scrutiny as to what gets built there.
But you think, too, if we were to build a commercial structure, we could go 35 feet. It could be bigger. And, too, if you think about it, what is there now? Probably underutilizes that property.
No doubt.
And if you were to build something commercial today, it would be much larger. You might have to do parking partially underneath, or I don't know what you'd do. But it has to fit with the code. Ours will fit with the code. There's amazing articulation that we're planning. I know that you don't say anybody could build anything. We're known for that. This is the first two houses my wife and I have ever built. We put a lot of time and effort into this to build something, not only attractive, but complimentary to our city and to the neighborhood. These houses are going to be approximately the same height as the ones to the east of it, but smaller.
See, if you were to build a single commercial building there, it would have to be in excess of 8,000 square feet and have parking to accommodate it, to be competing with the size of these homes. I don't see enough space there to build an 8,000-square-foot commercial building with parking. That would be bigger or larger than these two houses that are going to be a total of over 8,000 square feet.
5,700 square feet is the total. The others are outside decks. They're not, it's not heated and cooled. One's 2,600, and again, these are not permanent. I mean, it's kind of the way we're going. One's like 3,050 square feet, and the other one's 2,600. The others are outside porches and balconies, like most houses have today. No rooftop.
I have no doubt that the homes will be beautiful and look beautiful. I think that the right, given that it's being done as a condition and it's not an acceptable use without being a conditional use, the Board reserves the right to scrutinize what's going to be built there beyond the general scope, because being a conditional use, we have to protect it, as would the Commission, the public's view on the Boulevard there. I mean, we, you could go build any general residential structure that fits the requirements of the building code on any residential lot, and the general rules would apply, but when you have a residential property that abuts the Boulevard and the entire side of the building, some 60 linear feet, three stories up, faces the Boulevard, we need to have the right to scrutinize that above and beyond the normal conditions. We need to be certain that that's not just one big straight wall with no endesporches or any relief, and that it's not simply the Boulevard's palm trees that are provided by the public as landscaping. The building that was built on F Street clearly has more palm trees and landscaping on the west side of it than just the palm trees that the row palms had. We should be able to hold that same standard to whatever you build on this property if, in fact, we grant the right to do residential property.
And I agree with that, yeah.
And I appreciate your, your agreeing with that because I think for us to control things in a way that protects the public interest, because that's the only reason I think any of us are volunteering up here. We're not up here for public service of our own accord. We're here to protect everybody else that uses this beach and enjoys the beach and goes to the beach at F Street or anywhere else, and I think addressing any and all their, their concerns is as important as allowing you to build these homes, so as long as we can hold that ability to address those concerns and prevent something of being overbuilt, overdeveloped on these properties, I think the consideration should be given. We don't have enough information to make that decision. I don't believe, unless there's someone here that thinks we do. Because if we're going to grant a conditional use to build two large, single-family homes on two lots that are less than 5,000 square foot each as a conditional use in a commercial location, A, it should never be allowed again, should not set a precedent, and B, we should retain the right to see what you're going to build there.
Well, it actually, as you know, David, you're, it would set a precedent, right?
Well, I think the precedent's already been set on F Street, and I think the way we allow this to move forward needs to be clear, the only reason it's being allowed is because it backs up to those two properties. If it didn't, I would be very clear that I would say no.
Two on E Street, you mean?
Oh, there's two on F Street. There's two on E Street that we're considering. The two properties that were already approved on F Street that he backs up to.
This is, no.
No.
That's the opposite.
E Street.
Oh, excuse me, E Street.
That's what I'm saying.
Next door to it, too, that was one lot that built two houses next to our lot on F Street. That's the last.
Mr. Whitehouse.
But they, they back up to you, and that's the reason we're considering it. Without that, then.
No.
Okay.
It's not, it's not up on the podium.
What would the Board like to do?
Right.
Are there any other questions for me at all?
I don't.
No, thank you. I don't have a question for you, Mr. O'Brien, and you don't need to come back. I will only state that I can appreciate your role in this city government. You've been a longtime volunteer for the city government, but that also means that we have to make very sure that we make smart decisions, as, as you well know, because of your role. I will make a motion to recommend denial of this conditional use permit based on the fact that it does not meet the conditional use guidelines in the LDRs.
Want to take a vote on that?
Roll call. Mr. Bradfield.
I will have to agree it doesn't meet the conditions to get the conditional use, so I agree, yes.
Mrs. Odom?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloan?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Zander?
Yes.
Mr. Mithers?
No.
Motion to deny passes 42.
Recommend.
Recommend denial passes 42.
So, move on to the Commission.
From the Board?
Yes.
Board comment?
Would you?
Are you calling board comment?
Is there anyone on old business? Next one, would anyone from the Board like to comment?
Yes, I, I would. On a matter that was brought up earlier in the meeting, nothing to do with what we just discussed, I would like to know if the 72-unit J. McGarvey Ocean Ridge is coming back to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, it's going to be placed back before you for review again.
And do you know when that'll be?
I'm hoping for the May agenda.
May? Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, there's been some changes that the utility department has come up with that have got to come back to you.
Okay.
Man, his diagonal boring lines under the big micro Boulevard and how they entry into the subdivision.
Well, okay, you, we'll see the, whatever changes. I mean, if the ponds has been moved or the tree, you know, or they're restarting the house, but thank you, it'll be around May.
So, I have a follow-up on that, actually. Thank you, Mr. Mithers, for bringing that up. When the member of the public came up, who is, by the way, on the tree board and beautification board, I actually would like to better understand, I wasn't part of this board when that plan came, or that development, I don't know, Gary, the correct term, so please correct me, but that, is it development? Is that the correct term? Came before this board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't part of the board at that time, so I would just like to understand, did, did the Board have a site plan which showed trees that would be removed for the construction of roads, and is that, in fact, what's happening? I, I just need to better understand.
I'll gladly get together with you and go over that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Board comments?
I have, if there's no other comment, I want to make an introduction as well.
Go ahead.
Through the Chair. Obviously, as you heard earlier, Mr. James Wilson has been appointed as the new city attorney. He'll be taking over as of April 1st, so he'll be appearing for you at your next meeting. You know, obviously, it's been a pleasure serving with you guys and talking to you, and obviously, I'll see you around on Resident of the Beach. We enjoy being here, but I thank you for letting us be here for you, and as I said, And, and as I said, I want to introduce you to Mr. Wilson. I know Mr. Wilson very well. I worked with him at the City of San Augustine as his Assistant City Attorney, and he's very knowledgeable in this area of the law, and he'll, he'll serve you very well. So, I'll, I can introduce you personally to him later, but I wanted to publicly introduce him to the Board.
We appreciate your service.
May I ask?
Thank you.
Is, is Mr. Wilson actually going to be the person who comes to both our meeting and the City Commission? Oh, boy.
That's my understanding.
Isn't that fun?
Just, will you be at tomorrow's-
Fun for him.
Will you be at tomorrow's joint meeting?
What time is that?
5 o'clock.
It's possible.
Okay.
Mr. Whitehouse, I'd also like to thank you for your service. You've been very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you again.
We aren't an easy Board, I know.
Thank you.
Now, are the Board members coming tomorrow night's meeting? Okay.
We've been invited.
I know.
To bring our completed form, I might add.
Do we, do we perhaps want to just remind those here of the meeting tomorrow, the joint meeting?
Yeah, well, I mean, for those that don't know, and I don't know it is invited to the public to attend. Yeah, it's the Northeast Florida Regional Council is going to be guiding us as to how to amend our land development regulations to make them more consistent with the A1A corridor vision plan, the comprehensive plan, and the multiple charter, which apparently don't all read the same. You'll figure. That being said, we have instructions to go around the neighborhood and document when we look at areas, and I basically just stated, all day, every day, I go through these neighborhoods and have for the last 30 years, so I've seen quite a lot happen. We'll be getting counsel and advice from Brian People, which is the Northeast Florida Regional Council, and Lindsay Haga, who happens to work with England, Timson, Miller, but is also going to be assisting us.
So, that's a public meeting, and if any of you would like to come, we would sure appreciate more public input. 5 o'clock tomorrow night, joint with the Commission.
And it is nice to have the room somewhat filled. We've had many meetings when there was nobody but us, so it is nice to have the public coming. It does help us. It really does.